Welcome you to our meeting and I ask just you join us in the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Duranty.
Present.
Fokes.
Present.
Rappaport.
Present.
Richards.
Present.
Sharp.
Present.
Spezak.
Here.
Statchow is excused and Hornbuckle is excused.
Approval of minutes from last meeting.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Spezak and supported by Commissioner Fokes. Roll call please.
Roll call vote to approve the May 4 meeting minutes. Duranty.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Spezak.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
At this time of our meeting, if there's anything that is not on our agenda you'd like to bring before us, this would be the time to do it. I see nothing, we'll move into our first meeting on the agenda and its case 1051J, site plan and special land use modification for proposed outdoor seating at existing smoking lounge. Mr. Ayew.
Thanks Chairman. The subject property here is located at the southeast corner of Ann Arbor Trail in Middlebelt. The overall property is just above a half acre in a zone CB1, low intensity commercial. The applicant was granted site plan and special land use approximately around this time last year. You may remember this was a former vacant Burger King and the applicant was granted approval for a smoking lounge. Today, the business owner is requesting to modify that site plan and special land use approval to construct an outdoor patio area about 600 square feet with an overhang on top of it, kind of like a pergola style canopy that's going to be constructed using wood and vinyl paneling. It's going to have concrete footings, columns, and like I said, a roof. This does require a modification to the special land use approval because the smoking lounge was previously approved with several conditions and one of those conditions was if there is any outdoor seating proposed at a later time, the city council would need to approve that. So the administration is recommending approval of this, subject to a couple of conditions, which are the outdoor patio being closed daily at 10:00 PM and no outdoor music or entertainment of any kind spilling outside to that outdoor patio. Both of these conditions have been acknowledged as acceptable by the applicant and business owner who is here today. The outdoor patio is going to be located in this area right here identified in red. That's from Meriman kind of facing east towards the building. This is a site plan view. There are some parking spaces being displaced, I believe three or four. The plaza overall has more than sufficient parking areas to accommodate this use and future uses inside the vacant plaza. Just some elevation drawings and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Petitioners in the audience, might come and introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And you are sir?
My name is Salim Sabah. I'm owner of Glass House for Lounge.
Okay, anything you wish to add?
I want to thank you. I want to thank you all for the great city. It was my pleasure moving to Westland and I've been treated nice since, so I want to thank you all and I hope that you guys are going to approve this. I need it. It's summertime, people like to breathe some fresh air. It's going to be used for the afternoons majorly by 10 o'clock will be closed.
Very good. This is a public hearing, so we'll have you sit back down and I'll bring you back up and we'll open up the audience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my right wish to speak on this? Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone on my left? Sir, you can come back up. I see everybody is quiet, we'll open up the commission. Commissioner Rappaport.
Mr. Sabah, thank you very much for coming back before us. So I see that the city has the, that the administration has the two provisions, no outdoor patio area closing daily by 10:00 PM and the music or entertainment. I just wanted to remind the board that there were citizens present at the initial meeting and they expressed a lot of concern over noise issues and they were assured that the activities were going to be kept inside. So while I am very, very amenable to granting this and to giving a yes vote here, I do want to take at least a moment to remind you how concerned they were for the noise issue. You are backing up directly to people's backyards, so please be very conscientious and try and make sure that that area is regularly watched so that I'm sure you're not going to provide speakers if that's what they're, that your precautions are going to be. So please be mindful and try to take care of this.
I will for sure. I will for sure. I've been there for like five, six months now. We never had an issue and I will, we will not hopefully.
As I said, I'm a man of rights, I give you the best.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabah.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Yes, commissioners.
I just got a little comment.
Yes sir.
I've been in your facility and I want to tell you, you have one first class facility.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that you'll keep it up with the outside area.
Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other comments? Motion is in order. Yes, Commissioner Richards.
I move to close out case number 1051J, site plan and special land use modification for proposed outdoor seating for an existing smoking lounge at 7900 Middlebelt, southeast corner of Ann Arbor Trail in Middlebelt and sent to city council with recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations and subject to the following conditions. One, the outdoor patio area closing daily at 10:00 and two, no outdoor music or entertainment of any kind other than the smoking of hookah.
This is a public hearing? Did you close a public hearing?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Support?
Support. Go ahead.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, supported by Commissioner Spezak. Roll call please.
Roll call vote to approve case number 1051J. Duranty.
Absolutely.
Fokes.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Spezak.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Good luck sir as you go to city council.
Thank you.
And once again, we welcome your business here in our city and we hope that works well for you.
Thank you all, you're the best. Thank you.
Good evening. We'll move into our next case, which is case 1126B, site plan approval for proposed building additions for oil change shop 32911 Warren Road. Mr. Ayew.
Thanks Chairman. Subject property.
Wait.
The subject property here is located at the southwest corner of Warren Road in Winoy. It's currently zoned CB4. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to renovate the existing building, which is a vacant formerly occupied by a travel agent. So to renovate the existing building and construct in addition to accommodate a three bay oil change shop, that's approximately 1,800 square feet in area. Some site characteristics, site access will be maintained and is being proposed via two existing full service driveways, one at Winoy and one at Warren, kind of see them on the aerial image on the screen. There is room for approximately five stacking spaces as identified on the site plan, however more could fit if necessary. This is in compliance with the parking section of our zoning ordinance. Also 11 off-street parking spaces are required. The site plan proposes 12, therefore in compliance with the parking requirement. The proposed building will be constructed primarily with concrete and metal paneling materials. There's a rendering of the proposed aesthetics in your backup and shown on the screen. The existing screening wall is in poor condition and is proposed to be completely replaced and renovated and replaced with a six-foot tall masonry screen wall as identified on your plan. There's a landscaping plan that's in compliance with the zoning ordinance that includes shrubs and trees on the Warren and Winoy road frontages, a dumpster enclosure being included, site lighting in compliance with the lighting ordinance. The bulk requirements, the proposal is compliance, in compliance with all of them with the exception of the east side yard setback and the height which is allowed to be as high as the closest setback, which is only four feet eight inches. The building is proposed at 16 feet six inches, so a variance is required for that. And the side yard setback is required to be at 30 feet, proposed is 16 feet, so a variance is also required for that. The administration is recommending approval of this contingent upon the required variances being granted by the ZBA. Be happy to answer any questions and the developer is here as well.
Thank you sir. Now you can come up sir, welcome. I could understand your excitement.
Good evening.
And you are sir?
Stephen Hamadi. Thank you for having me here.
Yes, anything you wish to add?
I'm sorry?
Anything you wish to add?
Well, you know, I really appreciate all your support. I've been a long time businessman in Westland and I need to support with this project so I can beautify the corner, just like other corners I've acquired before and from there I'm going to take it.
Very good. This is not a public hearing, but is anybody in the audience wish to speak on this? We're going to open it up to commission. Commissioner Rappaport.
Well, if the motion is in order.
I believe so sir, I see nobody wishes at this time to speak, so that would be fine.
Regarding case number 1126B, site plan approval, move to send the case to city council with recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations and additionally with the condition that all required variances be granted by the ZBA or appeals.
Second. We get a motion by Commissioner Rappaport. We've got a number of supports, we'll go with Commissioner Richards, she was a bit quicker. Roll call please.
Roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 1126B. Duranty.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
And Spezak.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Nice work in building.
Thank you. Good luck. Glad to see you're making that improvement and increasing your opportunities.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
You are welcome.
Thank you Sam.
We'll move into our next case, which is case 1532D, site plan approval for the proposed veterinary clinic at 36391 Ford Road. Mr. Ayew.
Thank you Chairman. Site here is located at the southeast corner of Ford and Carlson. It's currently zoned CB4, that portion outlined in red and located in our Ford Road overlay district, which does allow for veterinary clinics. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct approximately a 5,000 square foot veterinary clinic. If approved, the applicant will construct the clinic to replace the existing clinic just to the east of that red line or to your right-hand side. The existing clinic will be open for as long as possible throughout the build-out of the new clinic and then demolished and replaced by parking areas for the new clinic. Some site characteristics of this development, the site access is proposed via two curb cuts, one at Ford Road and the other at Carlson over here and the other one over here. The proposed building will be constructed primarily using masonry, brick veneer and metal paneling. Accent materials will be composite wood veneer. There's a colored rendering in your backup, I'll put it up on the screen. The developer spent a lot of time creating it, so I'll put it for our viewers and audience in a second. There is a landscaping plan and a variety of screening elements that are all compliant with DDA standards and the zoning ordinance as well. They are replacing the city's DDA fencing that the city installed many years ago with one that is similar in color and style to the proposed building. I'll show you what that looks like today. The DDA is okay with that replacement. There's a dumpster being proposed, site lighting being proposed in compliance, there's a photometric plan in your backup and all of the bulk requirements including setbacks, lot coverage and building height are compliant. Before I go through this presentation, the administration is recommending approval of this plan with the condition that the three-foot tall shrubs be installed along the southern property line. Since writing the staff report, the applicant has revised the site plan to include that, so there's really no need to condition this site plan because that's how it will move to the city council. Like to open up a quick presentation and show you what this building would look like. This is facing the building off of Ford Road, I believe. That's the east.
Nice.
South, this would be facing the residential in the rear Ford Road. This is the west elevation of Carlson. This is the fence replacement that I was referring to earlier. Currently, it's like a more reddish orange version of this. Exact same style and design, just the color will be different. I think that is it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them on behalf of the administration and the developers also in the audience with the architectural team and I believe engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Ayew. The petitioner like to come forward, introduce yourselves.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. My name is Walter Pichak and I'm here with Mark Pichak. We own a, we're general contractors, we own a company called Pichak Design Build. This gentleman is Charles Hyde, he is the architect and we are here to answer any of your questions. Good evening.
Okay, anything you wish to add or?
No.
You're good?
No, we're good.
All right. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this? Anyone? Yes. Yeah, we'll have them come up and we'll be, we'll bring you back up. Yes, would you come forward and introduce yourself?
How are you going together? Let's do it together, since we're neighbors.
All right.
Hi, my name's Ellen Labb. I live, I'm at 2203 North Crown, so the fencing of the vet right now, the privacy fence is my, right in my backyard, next to my backyard.
Donna Stottlemyre, 2072 North Carlson. Look right out at it. I have no problem with them having that there, but just concerned about the fencing, the parking, the building that we just looked at. I mean, it's a nice building, but it wasn't what I was originally shown originally. Yeah, no problem, but.
Yeah, we just have some concerns because right now the dumpsters and the dumpsters are like right next to my garage. I mean, I could reach out and touch the dumpsters. To me, I thought they're supposed to be enclosed when anybody has a dumpster in a, you know, in a commercial building. I mean, in the summer when it gets hot and there's garbage in there, we can't open our windows at our house because the smell is so bad. I don't know what they throw in it. We've asked the previous owners and they said there's no actual animals that go in there, but you get people that pull in there out of the streets and out of the residence and throw garbage in there. My husband did find a dead dog in there once that was covered with maggots. It was told it was not thrown in by the vet, but somebody pulled up and thought, you know, it's a vet, we'll throw it in there. I mean, they had to jump in and clean that thing out from top to bottom. That's what we're concerned about, where these dumpsters are going to be and whether it's going to be enclosed because it gets really bad. And the fence also. I mean, right now there's a privacy fence. Is that wooden fence going to be on our whole property? I mean, the brick fence to where we can't see next door, you know? That's the kind of questions we're concerned about. My husband and I sit in our backyard all the time and have bonfires, you know, in our pit. So, you know, I mean, it's just right now, we can look out and see the park and the people playing and the kids and stuff and we just wondered what it's going to be like. We've lived there 42 years. We've been Westland residents and we're just concerned. I mean, I don't have anything against it. We have, we've had five dogs and we go to the vet. We've been, we've been a, you know, the Griffiths vet has been our vet since we've lived in that house, but we're just, you know, curious about the different things that are going on and, you know, we want to, how far the parking lot is going up to our back fence. That property comes right up to our fence line.
Very good.
So.
Mr. Ayew, would you like to answer those questions for the ladies?
Yeah, so there is a dumpster. It will, there will be an enclosure with gates and taller, taller masonry wall.
Okay.
Consistent with the requirements. There is some landscaping along the southern property line, which we have asked for to screen parking areas and to additionally screen any, any objective noise or anything like that that's generated by the parking lot. Where are the parking areas located? Some of the parking areas are directly adjacent along this southern property line, which are approximately in this area over here.
Yeah, what about that whole yellow area? So is that going to be all parking?
This is vacant.
That, I know, it is vacant now, so there's not going to be anything on there?
There are no plans to develop this site.
Okay, that's not part of their, what they're buying?
Just the, well, they have purchased, they are under contract to purchase.
Oh.
The area in the yellow.
Okay.
But this site is not in the development plans.
Oh, okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. No, that's it, I'm just.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Would gentleman like to return? Very good. Anything else, anything at all, before we open up the commission?
I think, Mark Pichak, thank you very much for having us here this evening. I think I would only add that part of the requirements were for that dumpster enclosure, so the walls would be higher, they'd be masonry, I think if anything, it would improve the existing scenario.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then in addition, that green screening that's required would, you know, isolate even more so the, you know, from that privacy fence that you have now, so we'll have taller shrubbery there as well.
Okay.
I think it's this wood fence, right?
Right now, it's, yeah, it's just like a wood fence.
It's barely going to block it.
Yes.
But my dog likes to look through it.
But again, I think in the end, it would be, you know, the situation would be improved, you know, and the dumpster would be enclosed and it would be.
Appreciate that, thank you.
You know, with detriment, it would be better, so.
Very good. We'll open up the commission.
Little historical fact.
Historical fact?
Yes, little historical, you're not going to put an airplane on top of the building or anything?
We have no plans at this time.
Well, see, people don't know that, but that was the Crown Super Service and there was an airplane on top of the building. Just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing in your plans?
Not currently in our plans, no.
Oh, that's too bad, it was a great drone.
What about maybe like a drone landing zone?
For dog drop off? I don't, yeah, I don't know.
We're just worried about aliens, ladies and gentlemen.
Commissioner Fokes.
I just have a comment. I'm just happy to see such a beautiful building and it doesn't even look like a veterinarian's office, it looks like maybe a clinic for people, so thank you for coming to Westland.
You can thank this gentleman.
His design.
Okay, good, very good.
Any other comments?
It's a pretty building.
Yes, Mr. Duranty.
I've just got a question, is it going to be the same vet center or is it going to be a new veterinarian unit?
It is going to be that same heartland group, I'm sorry, the Griffiths group that's going to run that hospital.
We're just building a new building.
Yes, that same, the same people are going to take that, that new practice and function.
The new one, the Blue Forest.
So I believe the existing doctors partner with a larger veterinary group and they're still functioning in that practice and then the intent is to grow the practice and bring on additional, you know, doctors and that's why they want to expand.
It's a great addition to that corner.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Good, good. Motion is in order. Commissioner, yes?
Before the, before the motion.
Yes sir.
Do you know what the hours of operation are going to be in the, in the facility? Is it going to be a?
Well, I'm sure the gentleman will tell us.
A daily, a daily practice or are they also going to do emergency, emergency veterinary?
I can't speak entirely in that, but I believe their, their intent is just for daily operation. As they're operating in the existing practice, I believe that's what their plan was.
I, my family, we've had a number of, we've had a number of pets and of course, the tragedy in having a loved pet is that, you know, getting, going in that you're going to outlive them. And we don't really have a nearby emergency vet, well, that we actually go to. And so the last, the last pet that we lost, we had drive quite a distance, so that, that is, thank you very much.
Sure. Commissioner Richard.
I move to send case number 1532D, site plan approval for proposed veterinary clinic at 36391 Ford Road, southeast corner of Ford Road in Carlson, to city council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations with the condition that three-foot tall shrubs be installed along the southern property line.
Support?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, supported by Commissioner Spezak. Roll call please.
Roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 1532D. Duranty.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
And Spezak.
Yes.
Motion carries. Gentlemen, looking forward to that new building there, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you ladies and gentlemen, we're looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, good luck when you go to city council, but I don't anticipate any issues there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next case is case 2258, site plan approval for the proposed enclosure of the existing vacant bank drive-through area at 36700 Ford Road. Mr. Ayew.
Thank you Chairman. All right, the subject property here is located on the north side of Ford Road between Newburgh and Central City Parkway. We just heard about the Texas Roadhouse last month, so this is obviously just directly adjacent to the east of that. The property is approximately 1.3 acres in area, currently zoned PUD and is developed by Park West Dental, formerly a bank that sat vacant for a few, couple of years, maybe a few years. The bank had a drive-through operation that some of you may be familiar with. Um, the bank had a drive-through operation that some of you may be familiar with in this location over here, just a typical drive-up banking operation with some teller windows and a couple of those chutes that, uh, give you your money. Um, so the petitioner is requesting site plan approval to, uh, enclose that space. It's approximately 1,700 square feet in area, uh, and the applicant wishes to, uh, market or potentially lease this, uh, space out to a pharmacy or other, uh, consistent type medical use that would be, um, in line with the dental practice. Uh, there's no really changes to the site, um, operations that are worth mentioning, uh, or, or even any that I can mention rather. Um, all the site design characteristics remain the same and they're outlined in your packet. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them. Uh, the administration is recommending approval of this, um, and that's all I have. I know the business owner, the dentist, uh, slash doctors in the office and, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions and I know he will as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, you are not the petitioner? You are the petitioner?
Yes.
Well, very good. I wasn't sure there, he was sitting with your, your friend there. Yes, any questions?
Uh, good evening, Chairman. Like the previous appellant, I too am a newcomer to Westland and it was actually at, uh, request and recommendation of my good friend Steve to come to Westland and, uh, I can tell you that so far it's been a very positive experience. Uh, I would like to thank the administration, uh, for working with me and welcoming me to Westland and also for Steve to talk me into coming here. Thank you. Uh, but also, uh, yes, we've been here for about a year and, uh, the area, uh, behind the current dental office is currently a drive-through as, uh, the planning director has mentioned and, uh, we would like to enclose that and we are asking for your support in doing so.
Very good. Very good. We'll open it up to the commission. Yes, Commissioner Durany.
What's gonna happen? The ATM in the back? It's gonna be gone too?
The ATM is, uh, is gonna continue to be there and we're basically enclosing around it, uh, so that's not gonna be disturbed. That will stay there. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Motion's in order?
Well, I'll do it.
Commissioner Spiezzak?
Move the case number 2258, approval of the enclosed existing vacant drive-through area at 36700 Ford Road, north side of Ford Road, east of Newburgh Road. Be sent to the council with a recommendation for approval, uh, forwarded to the city council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Second order.
Motion by Commissioner Spiezzak, uh, supported by Commissioner Durany. Roll call, please.
A roll call vote to approve case number 2258. Duranty?
Yes.
Foltz?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Spiezzak?
Can I think about this? Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Glad you, uh, brought your business to Westland. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks. Good luck.
Thank you.
Sir, can we help you?
Yeah, it took me 40 minutes to get here because of the storm. I was here for the, uh, Ann Arbor Trail in Middlebelt.
Oh, yes. Yeah, it wa- it was approved. It'll be sent on to the City Council.
Okay. Yeah, we can already hear their music, so.
Okay, no problems in that area?
Oh, I live kitty corner from it and I can hear every night that they're open.